Ready, okay. Okay, welcome everybody to tonight's city council meeting. The council chamber is open to the public at a hundred percent capacity. Today's Wednesday, March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Before tonight's invocation, I would like to honor and recognize a local leader that we lost unexpectedly last Friday evening. City of Fowler Mayor David Cardenas. David served on the city council for twenty-one years, including the past twelve years as mayor. David was well-known for running his Fowler business, Dave's Auto, for decades, his community service, and his activism in his church. He was well-known to all of us on council, serving as a friend and mentor. We extend our sincere condolences to his family and to the entire city of Fowler. Please join me by honoring David with the moment of silence. Thank you for that moment of silence. Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor John Palms, Community Kingsburg Task Force, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, John.
You guys, before I say anything, I wanted to say that I, you know, looking around this group of people who are leaders in our city, I just really appreciate who you are. It's a pleasure just to come here and do an invocation for you, but I just want to say that I, you know, it brings me smiles to my face when I see you. So let me pray. Father, I just thank you for these people here who have shown amazing responsibility for a lot of the growth and the maturity in our city, in our city of Kingsburg. Lord, they make decisions on, based on what they believe is best. You've given them abilities and talents. By making efforts and taking risks, they learn how to best handle these, those talents. Like, Lord, I bless them in their efforts and their willingness to take risks. I pray that they will seek ways to, continue to seek ways to encourage the men in our city to learn to be true husbands and fathers. They figure out ways to guard where our children are being taught in school. They pursue helping our youth through restorative justice. They help children learn to take responsibility rather than seeking entitlement. Father, I bless them in the ways that they look to enhance our financial future and that they look for ways to guard our, our health in times of the pandemic. God, what I, um, what I just see is this, this is a growing city, Lord. It's, it's growing in terms of its maturity and its willingness to really help each of the individuals in the city. And so, God, I, I know this is a time of real, um, real challenge in our nation, in our, in our world. And, Lord, I just bless these people as they sit here on a weekly or every other week basis, Lord, to say, what do we do? How do we do to help grow our city and help it be safe and a place for growth for the citizens who live here? So, God, I bless them in those efforts and I congratulate them on taking the time and effort to do that, taking up their, again, of their individual abilities and talents and putting those to use here. So, God, thank you, and I pray this, all this now in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Can we have roll call, please?
Present.
Here.
Here. Next, we, um, approve agenda. Action by council to approve the agenda or to make modifications. Items that can be added to the agenda is constrained by state law.
I'll make that motion.
I will second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Presentations tonight, we have none. Public comments. This is time for any citizen to come forward and address the city council on any issue within its jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Anybody, um, out there like to have a public comment? Make a public comment tonight?
Yes.
Okay, come on up. If you could please state your name and if you're a Kingsburg resident.
Yes, I'm in Volcoman Village and my name is Gary Myrie. Uh, what, we came here to talk, myself and another resident, uh, came here to talk about the, uh, feral cats that are running crazy all over the place. And we'd like to know if there's anything that the city can do to help us, to, to capture them, do something with them so that they're not, uh, you know, they're, they're leaving their mark on, on all sorts of furniture, your porches, your cars, and things like that. And it's just unbelievable. And there is, uh, every day you'll, you'll see two or three, uh, cats going across the, the road. And, uh, don't know them all, don't know anything about it, but we do have people who are feeding them. They're not supposed to. The, uh, Volcom Village, they're, in their pamphlet, they have a, a provision that says that people basically are not supposed to be feeding, feeding them, but there's, there are people that do. And, uh, we have the, we have talked to the manager, Larry, and we have talked, and, uh, he has talked to one lady, or, yeah, one lady who is feeding them, and her answer to him was, when they stop the train whistle at three o'clock in the morning, I'll stop feeding the cats. So, how do you fight it? How do you even address it? But we do have signed signatures of, of people who have, who we've gone around and said, you know, this is what we're trying to do, and we've, we did go to the city, uh, the, the police department and asked them, and they suggested this, this would be the next step is to come here. So that's why we're here today. Or that's why I'm here along with my, uh, the lady who lives across the street from me. And that's it. But if you can help, that's what we're looking for. Any type of help. Just, uh, like it says, even if you live, you leave your window open in your car, you could get cats to come in there because they're looking for, uh, shelter and/or food or anything like that. And it, and you surely don't want these, the smell to be stuck in your car. So that, that's what we're asking. Like I said, it's just, it, I don't know if the city can do anything, but it's better than not having anything at all.
Okay, I think you, we can't comment on, on this item for, you know, that you're worried about, but we can direct it to city staff.
That's, uh, that's, we're starting. That's, uh, that's what we want to do, just get started and hopefully something could be done about it.
Okay, thank you.
I'll give you my card here and, uh, I'd be happy to, uh, follow up. We do have a program that we can help you out with.
Oh, yeah, that, that would be really, really appreciated because I know there was one that, uh, they were taken, they, uh, captured cats and then they took them and had them fixed.
Correct.
But my thing is if you fix them, can you take them somewhere other?
Unfortunately, we can't. We're a little constrained by that, but, uh, there are, uh, we could, we could talk, we'll talk about it and give you some options.
Okay, alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Do we have any other citizens that would like to make public comment tonight? No, okay, I'll close public comment. Next, we have consent calendar. Items considered routine in nature are to be placed on consent calendar. They will be considered as one item and voted upon in one vote unless individual consideration is requested. Each vote in favor of consent calendar is considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action listed. Tonight, we have five point one, five point two, five point three, five point four, five point five, five point six, and five point seven. Does any council member want to pull one of these items?
I don't.
Yes.
Staff. Staff are public.
Any, um, anybody in the public want to pull one of these items? No? Okay. Then we can get a motion to approve.
I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, okay, motion carries. Next, we have regular calendar, six point one. Public hearing, two thousand and twenty census, Kingsburg City Council redistricts, redistricting, redistricting. Presentation by Jeff Tilton, National Demographics Company.
Hey, good evening, uh, again, uh, council and, uh, members of the audience who, uh, may have seen this now for the fourth time.
And we are open for public hearing.
I was gonna ask you, Mayor Protemp, if you wanted to do that first.
Open public hearing presentation by Jeff, uh, Jeff Tilton. Thank you, Jeff.
You're very welcome. So, uh, yeah, so here we are the fourth time. So with apologies for those who've already seen this, uh, presentation already, three by law, I need to, to go through this. Um, so, uh, over the course of time, and I know you're struggling, we're saying redistricting, it does happen, but, uh, good for you. Um, you don't have to do this again for ten years. So, um, you know, there's silver lining there. So as part of this process, we have to, we had to have a minimum of four, uh, public hearings. The first two were before any draft maps were, uh, submitted or provided to council. And then the last two, or at least two, were what we call draft map hearings, and this is the fourth one and hopefully the final one for tonight. So we started back September first and, uh, we had those two public hearings to essentially educate the public on the process and to solicit, solicit input, uh, from members of the public with respect to what are the neighborhoods in your community? And what are some of the communities of interest in your, in your city? And it may be questions on some of the mapping tools that folks, uh, had an opportunity to, uh, participate with. Uh, as we have been living this life of pandemic, uh, the census was delayed. Um, we finally got the census data August twelfth, uh, which meant absolutely nothing for California because California took the census data numbers and adjusted based on its prisoner population in the state prison system. How much that impacted, uh, the city of Kingsburg, I have no idea. Maybe the chief knows, uh, but, um, it may have been zero. Uh, other jurisdictions, uh, may have been impacted greatly, uh, with their, with their actual census data. So when we're talking about jurisdictions, uh, going through this process, it's counties and cities, school districts, health districts, water districts, any, uh, jurisdiction that has a body that's elected goes through this process. So, uh, I brought before you the Zoom or I think it was Zoom, uh, back in February, um, some draft maps. Um, I will share those again tonight, not in great detail because you made a decision on focusing on two maps going forward. The intention for tonight is to, uh, draft a map. If you draft one of the maps that you, um, asked to move forward for tonight, there's really no discussion on sequencing because nothing changes, uh, in that respect. Uh, and then, uh, for, hopefully you'll adopt a resolution to support the, uh, moving forward. So when, when we're talking about, uh, redistricting, we have to follow certain rules. And there's federal laws that, and our intention is to try to create districts within the city of equal population. Uh, and we use the, the census data, in this case, California prison adjusted data, uh, to try to accomplish that. We can have a, a, a ten percent deviation in doing this process, and I'll show you what that means in a second. Uh, we must follow the Federal Voting Rights Act. We don't want to have any discriminatory practices in this process, in essence, and we want to know racial guarantee, we want no racial gary mandarin. Um, then we shift to California and under the Fair Maps Act, we have to, in this particular order, and every, everything starts with, to the extent practical, that we want to have geographically contiguous districts. Uh, and you'll see that you have that. Uh, we want to, to the extent practical, not divide neighborhoods or not to divide communities of interest. Uh, we want to have easily identifiable boundaries, uh, and we want our districts to be compact. Um, and we shall not favor or discriminate against a political, uh, party. If we can do the items in, in the left column and the items in the center column, then we can consider some of those items then, uh, on the far right column, especially looking at respecting voters' choices, uh, who they elected, they elected you, et cetera. Um, so one of the key things here is you, you're gonna see draft maps, folks in the public might be seeing them for the first time. It's not as simple as saying, hey, let's just put a line here and over there and this will create a district. We have to use census blocks. And, uh, census blocks, well, in the Central Valley, a lot of census, census blocks are gonna be squares and rectangles. Um, but there are some funky-looking census blocks, and that, uh, determines how a particular district's gonna look. Um, so I just want to mention that in case someone says, oh, why can't we do it this way or that way? So, uh, these were the questions we asked. What is your neighborhood? What is your community of interest? Uh, we got, uh, minimal response on that, but we did have, uh, seven draft maps for council. Uh, five are what we call viable maps, uh, two, uh, public one oh two. Its deviation was twelve point four eight, which is above ten percent. So it's, you really can't take it into consideration. And it was not contiguous. It had holes. Uh, and then, uh, public map one oh five is sixteen point seven five percent deviation. Um, how we get that deviation number is, uh, we're, we're gonna look at a table in every of the, every five dis, of the five districts, rather, and how, what's the percentage they are, are off on, uh, the equal population ideal target number? And then you add the highest number, positive number, and the highest negative number, and you get the deviation. Uh, so we want to keep that under ten. So you could see, uh, we had, we had some ones all the way up to nine point zero six, et cetera. Also want to point out, as I mentioned last time, to thank all the individuals who submitted maps from the public. I mean, it takes time, it takes forethought. Uh, obviously, they're invested in this process and, and thank you. So, uh, this is what I call the council advance. This is my terminology. Uh, the deviation for, uh, NDC two oh one was six point three six percent. Uh, when you see it has two Latino C VAP districts, that means citizen voting age population majority. So it's more than fifty percent plus one in, uh, those two districts. In this case, it would be districts one and, and five. Uh, this particular draft map does not pair any council members. So if you chose this one, there's no sense talking about election sequencing because it stays status quo. NDC two oh two, uh, shows that deviation of seven point three. Same thing with citizen voting age population. Again, citizen voting age population is not necessary, necessarily registered voters, they're eligible to vote. Okay, so they may not be, uh, registered, they may not have even voted, but they're eighteen plus. Uh, same thing in districts one and five, and there are no council members paired. So as part of the public hearing and your discussion, um, these are the two maps that you had me, uh, bring forward to you tonight. Uh, you can always make a change. Uh, once you vote for whatever you do and then do your resolution, then you're good and you'll see me in ten years. I'll be seventy, but you'll see me in ten years. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, council discussion on these maps. Any have a comment? Concern?
I don't think I have any concern at all. I think they're very similar maps, similar real. Changes that I see are very slight and it's with between one, four, and three. Representing three, I like, uh, NDC two oh two more. I just like how it comes down and you end up getting part of downtown represented in three. So part of downtown has two representations then from council. Um, that's my biggest reason for preferring two oh two is just to give a portion of downtown to two separate districts. So it has more representation that way.
I really don't have a preference between two oh one to two oh two. And if that's, it's like if you're saying you like that, you know, there's gonna be, um, four and three in two oh two, you said? In downtown? Yeah. Um, I wouldn't have any reason to not want to choose two oh two if that's something that you're wanting to see, right? Because like for me and for District One, it's still majority, uh, of the west side of town. The only difference between two oh one to two oh two is that in District One and two oh one, it's, um, there's this little, there's this little piece where it says like Laurel Street and Simpson Street. So it's that little piece that's different between the two, but, um, I've been representing half this, half aside and then all up into the, so, you know, I really think that if you're leaning with two oh two, I wouldn't mind, um, picking that one because I really, there's hardly any differences.
Yeah, I agree. I know that when we had, went over this last meeting, um, we wanted to try and keep the district similar. You know, that, that the city picked, the council picked, was it four years ago? Yeah, so I think either one of these is good. I don't have a preference either of, if you like, two oh two. Brandon, you know, that's good with me, for me, it, they both are, I think, exactly the same, so for my district right now, either one of those, but yeah, that, that's a good point, though, that two, uh, two council members have some representation on, on it's the city here, city businesses. Any other discussion?
Well, I'm, I lost my.
Oh, you have something?
No, I just, I can't. My page is all blank.
Oh.
So I can't see anything.
Look up there, no.
I, well, I wanna Zoom. I have good eyes just because I'm Zoom. I was just gonna ask, so for, between two and three, they, thank you. Between two and three and, and two oh one and two oh two, um, don't they both have a presentation downtown? What did you, they don't?
Two oh one goes straight down, or straight down Eighteenth. Uh, two oh two, it comes around by where the hospitals.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
Just that bottom.
It's hard to see, it's there yet.
That was so strange. Okay, thank you. Okay, sorry, I just want a clarification on that.
All the deviations are well within guidelines. There's no CBAP district variations. There's no, it's, when I, when I look, I spent a lot of time looking at both of these and that's the only real difference size. It's splitting hairs. It's just selfishly, I'd like to see downtown have more representation.
Oh, I think that's.
That's a good point.
Yeah, so, um, with that, can we?
Well, uh, we'd like to open, yeah, open for public comment on, uh, the redistricting. Would anybody like to?
Yeah, I think we should give it.
Yeah, come on up, yeah.
Hey darling, I'm a resident. Yeah, I can like number two. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, we got public comment.
Nobody else, public comment, okay. Anybody else have any comments on this?
Ten years, it's a commitment.
Okay, then, well, closed public comment. Continue city council discussion.
Are you good with selecting the final map?
Sure am.
I'll make the motion to select map NDC two oh two.
And I will second that motion.
Okay, I'll close public, public hearing. Um, possible action is, I'm sorry, I said, I had, I had to close, um, the public hearing, so, I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to adopt NDC two oh two as our redistricting map.
And I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any opposed? Motion carries, we're good. Um, so now I need a motion to adopt resolution, two thousand and twenty-two dash oh two one.
I'll make that motion.
And I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Okay, that motion also carries. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So are we actually done with redistricting now? Is it like?
Yeah, we're done. That was it.
Take care of the rest.
I appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff.
That's a good thing to be passed.
Yeah, it is.
Done, ten years.
Let's see, did it. Okay, next we have six point two. Kingsburg Tri-County Hospital District Grant Policy and Grant Application. Staff report, staff report by Community Services Director Adam Castaneda. Presentation by Director of Administrative Services Christina Windover and Fire Chief Daniel Perkins.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp and members of council. Okay, so tonight you have the staff report sitting in front of you specifically about the Kingsburg Tri-County Healthcare District Grant. Uh, I'll make this as short and sweet as possible. The executive summary is very well stated by Director Castaneda. Grants are awarded for purpose allowed by law, including to aid the operation of free clinics, health education programs, wellness and prevention programs, rehab, and any other healthcare which is necessary for the maintenance of good physical and mental health in Kingsburg community. So having said that, each year the preference will be given to specific projects, and this year's themes for the hospital district specifically were mental and physical healthcare, nutrition, exercise, and diabetes. So those were very specific parameters which they wanted to set. So, over these last few years, a total of about five years, going back to about twenty seventeen, the city has got an estimated about three million dollars in grants from the Kingsburg Tri-County Healthcare District. It's been instrumental in many programs within the city, and again, I've we've been of, the fire department, as in the we, have been a very, uh, healthy recipient of that, and it's been a very lucrative thing for the fire department, as well as the city and many other projects that have been successful, not only for public safety, but also for the betterment of the community, especially when it comes to health. So specifically, relating it to health, one of the items that we worked as a group together uh, for the department heads was, one of the issues that had come up early on in my tenure was the status of the uh, senior citizens center kitchen area. Far under code, uh, there were many things that were needed in that, in that particularly, but the initial fix was estimated to be in the, in the realm of about seven hundred thousand dollars, quite pricey. So, that was tabled and rethought about. We did a little more, a meeting of the minds. And specifically, one of the things that I think is instrumental to understanding the ask in this is before COVID nineteen hit, there was a lot of seniors that were being served meals by, basically, a Meals on Wheels program through FM AAA, the Fresno Madera Agency on Aging. In March of twenty twenty, the city took it upon themselves to do that program because that system ended. So there was no one else feeding that particular segment of society. In that short amount of time, from then till now, the city has provided sixty-five thousand meals to seniors. Now put that in perspective, not only is it sixty-five thousand meals, but those are all cooked at that facility. So again, knowing that we have a non-compliant, um, kitchen, I think one of the things we really strive for as a group was to find a solution to this. So we took it upon ourselves to go through this process again, came up with a more viable alternative, which is one of the presentations we have read tonight for your approval. Uh, the project that we're trying to get moved forward, uh, as proposed, set is to include the following. Exterior and interior fire door upgrades, roller service window door upgrades, service panel electrical upgrades, fire sprinkler alarm systems for the kitchen only. Uh, mechanical and HVAC duct vent upgrades, compartment kitchen sink, rage hood inducting, range oven and units, and that's, that particular price is about two hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. So much, much more palatable, I think. And overall, I think one of the things that this does affect is the overall health of seniors in our community, which in long-range view, un- ends up affecting the fire department and our emergency responses, as well as community risk reduction. So that's the first ask that we would ask for you to approve for us going forward, and the second one, um, is the fire department-specific ask. And again, speaking to the overall care of where we are in general with the, um, rollout of public safety, one of the things we've been trying to do is access other areas and other, uh, abilities for us to render care. One of the things we've seen as a wouldn't say Achilles' heel, but one of the, the struggles we have is accessing areas along the Kings River drainage, as well as the Kings River, as well as other areas that we are by automatic aid agreement and mutual aid agreement responsible to respond to. So a lot of those are inaccessible areas that only are accessible either by foot, four-wheel-drive vehicle, or utility vehicles, as we are suggesting here. So one of the things we are suggesting is a utility train vehicle, as well as all the upfitting for that, um, that particular program and all of its, um, concomitant things that go with it is about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. It's basically the utility vehicle, trailer, the other equipment that goes on it. Essentially, that vehicle also serves the city in another dual purpose, while it's not doing that particular thing off in the, I guess, boondocks, as you might say. Uh, it's able to respond to all of the community events, football games, our Swedish festival, car show. It has a small makeshift ambulance cot on the back, has the ability to respond in small crowds of, of people. It's very nimble, and it's not nearly the, uh, sixty-five thousand pound ambulance that we've been accustomed to seeing that transports our paramedics and patients. The other additional thing that we wanted to reach out as well and get approval for was the Community Wellness and Outreach Program. That particular total cost for that is seventy thousand dollars. That includes public access, sorry, public AED and CPR courses, smoke and carbon monoxide detection outreach program, public outreach for mental and physical wellness, which is all included in public outreach in general at all of these public events, as well as expansion of our website for the fire department to have greater access for all members of our community, and a healthcare worker's physical and mental wellness program, working concomitantly with the, uh, money that's set aside within the ambulance funding for night calls to have a wellness program, prevention program for the responders that we do have. So those are the two major asks from both departments, uh, one two hundred and twelve thousand dollars, the other a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. And we would ask that you'd, uh, grant the ability for us to move forward with that process. Are there any questions?
Does your, does that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars include training for your utility vehicle?
Absolutely. Includes the training, trailer, uh, additional equipment that has to go on it.
And, uh, I think the community wellness and outreach is fantastic. I know you guys do a lot of that work already as it is, but that would just look like additional courses and additional things to what, added on to what you already do.
Specifically, yes, specifically, the, the, one of the needs we've seen in general is to go literally door-to-door to community members, to ascertain whether they have a working smoke detector, whether they have needs in their homes that we're not aware of, massing all of that data, working with census data, and then moving forward with how do we solve the community's problems that we may not even be aware of.
That's, that's awesome, and for that program, um, is that you, you are going, not you maybe, but your department is going to the doors, or are you going to have volunteers, or?
So, in, in, so interestingly enough that you ask it, we have a group that graduates, uh, Saturday, the Community Emergency Response Team, Kingsburg. So the CERT volunteers, as they are, and one of the members is here tonight. He, he will be graduating Saturday along with many other people in the community. Uh, we should be graduating eleven of those volunteers. They're working together with K-Caps and the two interns there, uh, in conjunction with where they're doing their outreach to reach the people that are either underserved, don't have the ability to reach out, or there's a language barrier, or even a digital divide, where they don't have access to any of the things that we've become accustomed to, internet, computers. We've got to find a way to reach the people that actually need us.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for sharing that. And, um, on an off note, for that graduation on Saturday, is that a public event, or is that?
Um, the test, the testing, the testing is going to be a, a private event, but we're, we're planning on coming to council to actually present to you all of the volunteers that made it through that process and award them their certificates.
Awesome, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Appreciate the hard work. Put in.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Council discussion? Okay. Action deemed as necessary.
Do you want us to submit the application based on those?
Yes, just looking for direction, uh, for staff to submit applications on those two, uh, proposed projects, unless there is a different direction.
Except for them all going forward.
Yeah. So you have directions? Okay, good.
Thank you.
You're welcome, okay. Six point three, crime statistics report for the month of February twenty twenty-two and general police department update. Crime statistic report prepared by Kingsburg Police Department Records Supervisor Karina Padilla. Presentation by Police Chief Neil Vadian.
Uh, good evening, members of the council, good to be with you again. So I just wanted to point out a couple of things. Statistically, we seem to be moving in the right direction, kind of had a eventful start for the first part of the month. It seemed to be hopefully an anomaly, but we did have some, a fair amount of crime, um, especially when it came to our grand thefts. I mentioned last time that we made some arrests for catalytic converter thefts, and most of the ones you see in January are those catalytic converter thefts. So we're moving in the right direction. When it comes to the rest of the crime stats, um, I also want to point out to council, if you want to take a look at, I don't know if it's your last page, but it's the, the bar graph for the calls for service. So last couple of years, they're not where I wanted those to be, just as a refresher, um, the blue line represents officer-initiated calls, the red line, citizen-initiated calls. I want, I want the officer-initiated calls to be higher than the citizen-initiated calls. And, you know, we hit that, uh, a few times in two thousand and nineteen, uh, and, uh, in two thousand and eighteen as well. Uh, the pandemic caused us to reverse course, but hopefully that, that will continue to um, climb again in twenty twenty-two, because again, that's proactivity, the more we're out there getting in front of crime, the less crime that we're going to have. I want to update the council on, uh, a couple of, a handful of things from recent months. Uh, we did have a shooting at Coda Lane and Number Twelve. This was last August, I believe. We had three suspects. One is already in custody in prison on unrelated charges, and I've mentioned this prior. Um, and then we're going to be filing charges on him and one other suspect. The commit, the case has been submitted, uh, for a warrant and is processing through the DA's office, so we're, we have made progress on that one. We also had a shooting just, uh, at the start of the week on Monday night, Tuesday morning at Eighth and Kern in the early morning hours. Uh, that's still under vast investigation. We're tracking suspects via city cameras and, um, personal, uh, home security cameras. We do have a vehicle, but not a plate, so we're going to send the video out to be digitally enhanced, and we're in contact with the Central California Intelligence Center in Sacramento, um, which is the Regional Threat Assessment Center to ha- um, get that done. They, they have the capability to do that, and they've helped us on cases in the past. So the video surveillance in the city is really helping us. And, you know, obviously, we're going to move in that direction to assist with that, um, by building out our own cameras, but, you know, we get a lot of help from our our residents, and they're more than happy to help us, business owners and residents, so, um, that's helped us make a lot of cases. So that's a, that's a nice, it's nice to be able to go to that well and, and get help from our citizens. Um, I want to I want to bring to your attention a case that I can't talk to you about in detail. It's a child abuse case, but it's unusual. I think it's important that you know some of the different things that we do. So this, um, there was a, a family gathering in another county, and, uh, there was a six-month-old child in the care of a relative who accidentally dropped the, the carrier that the child was in, the little boy, he went kind of, or somersault over, or backwards, and kind of bumped his head. Well, the parents were concerned, obviously. They took the child to, um, um, Valley Children's Hospital. They went through their protocols. The, the child was not injured due to the, um, fall, but the doctor found, uh, what he believed was a prior injury. And again, this is where I can't get into details, and I hate to be cryptic, but I want to protect, protect confidentialities. They initiated, uh, a call to the local law enforcement agency, who arrived, determined that there was nothing that occurred originally uh, for the parents being there with the child, but that the prior injury needed to be investigated. Since they are residents of Kingsburg, we got a call and we responded. We had the child examined by a specialist, um, as part of our investigation, a forensic, um, I forget exactly what their title is, but they deal with kids, right? You know, and if, um, they're specialists in this. And it's been we, so we have two differing opinions, the initial doctor who saw the child, and then the specialist. So there's two different theories on with, whether this was an injury or not an injury, but something that is also common to small children of that age. After several weeks, we completed our investigation and determined that no criminal action had taken place, and so we're not going to be referring that to the DA's office. The Child Protective Services, however, took that child that day and an older sibling from the parents, and they placed them with other relatives, so, you know, the parents have ac- access under supervision. And it's, you know, it's good that they are with some relatives, but that, um, CPS is not releasing that child uh, until they have a judicial hearing, which they hope is going to be in June. Nothing we can do about that. The reason I mention this is, you know, everybody thinks of the police as, you know, we're the ones out to arrest people. But it's equally important, you know, we gather facts, and it's equally important for us to not only prove facts of a crime, but to disprove facts of a crime. And in this case, that's what we did, and we think we served the, the interest of the, the small child, of the parents, and the rest of the family. Now CPS has our protocols, there's nothing we can do about that. Um, it's just unfortunate that a judi- judicial officer has to make this call, but that's the way the system works. But again, I know that people listen to this broadcast, and, you know, there, these are public meetings with public minutes, and I, I just want people to understand that, you know, there's a different facet to what we do. We don't only prove that crimes occur, we disprove that crimes occur as well, so. I just wanted to, it's so unusual and kind of unique, and I certainly haven't run across it in my time here. Other, you know, in the past I have, certainly, but I thought I would bring that before council, just to let you know that we're fact-finders, good, bad, or indifferent. You know, our job's to find the facts, and, and if we can vindicate somebody, we're more than willing to do that as well, not just prove their guilt, but also prove their innocence. One other thing on the crime stats, I should have mentioned a minute ago, was, uh, we had nine DUI arrests for February, which is a little bit unusual for us. Normally, we run about four on average a month. So, not just a statistical anomaly, anomaly, that's why I thought I'd mention it. Uh, in other news, we have, our training plan is back on track, uh, but we're going to be catch, playing catch-up for the next couple of years. We have exceeded our mandatory training during the COVID period in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, and we're on track for twenty twenty-two, but there's other things that I require of the officers. Example, um, everybody will start now attending again the, um, Museum of Tolerance Training. It's a one-day training down in LA at, at the Museum of Tolerance. It's really beneficial. Principal policing, which we've started, um, but to a limited degree, um, why, why'd you stop me training? DX, de-escalation tactics, and then some police work, kind of, technical stuff. Everybody goes to basic detective school at some point, probably in year two to three. Uh, we're a little behind on that, um. But that's something that everybody's got to go to, so we're a little more, little bit of catching up. Sexual assault investigation, all the officers have to go through that. Child abuse investigation, they all have to go through that, and then, uh, some of the things that I want to throw in for them, officer's safety and field tactics, things of that nature, so, um, we're thankfully, COVID is not affecting some of the training that we really need, and there, it's a little bit slow to get started, but, uh, we're on our way to making that happen. Next time, I'm going to have, uh, some stats for you, just an idea of, like a snapshot. I think I did this last year, where I provided a ten-year snapshot, so I'll do the same thing, just, and I think you'll be happy with the results. We're moving in the right direction. And then, uh, as soon as, uh, I answer any of your questions, I'm going to have Barbara Taylor come up, who's one of our police volunteers, and talk to you about our community room, um, when I'm available, answer any questions if you have any. I'm sorry, family room, not community room.
No question, just thanks for keeping crime low in Kingsburg, chief, you know?
Our pleasure.
Thank you. Yeah, this looks nice.
Well, as chief said, I'm Barbara Taylor. I'm a volunteer with the police department. I'm also becoming a chaplain with the police department, so, for two hats there. Um, we, when the police department was built, they created two interview rooms. One's called the hard interview, and the other one's called the soft interview. Well, the hard interview is for the suspects. The soft interview is for the families, or the victims, pardon me. Well, um, when it was built, a group of women came in from, um, Kingsburg Women's, Women's Club, I think is what it's called, anyway. They came in and painted it. They put in some furniture. We had an extra couch that we'd gotten with some furniture, and they put in a, a small desk and a metal rack, and then they brought in a few little books and crayons and stuffed animals. We had stuffed animals coming out of our ears. But, um, we've managed to, to distribute the stuffed animals. Um, we also got a bunch of handmade blankets that we've taken the blankets and the bears, put them in bags, and each of the officers have them in their car. So if the situation arises, would it, would be beneficial to use one of those, they can. But in the meantime, the chief decided he wanted the family room redone. So I said, I will. I was the first to volunteer, and so I recruited my husband to help me, of course. And I recruited, um, Reggie Gerkey to help me, so I was, I was all set. All I had to do was tell him what to do. And I'm used to doing that. So, the family room, uh, it's just, okay, the family room had very little chill, child-friendly stuff in it. It was not conducive to children. There was little seating space for people to sit on. It's a small couch. The officers had to use this little desk to do, write the reports. So I went in and I repainted. We took everything out. I repainted, um, did it in purple, so the top half is a light purple and the bottom dark, and then we put a white, um, board around the edge. You can see here, I got some children-sized table and chairs for the kids. Uh, that's Mickey and Minnie waiting for their visitors. We get a lot of children through here. It's amazing, um, how many children do go through. It's, it's sad, but it's, it's also surprising. I, I added, um, the bookshelf, uh, the book rack, I'm sorry. It's in the, um, I guess I can't point to it. It's in the, um, corner of the room. You can't quite see it the way that's situated. It's behind, I'm sorry, it's behind the table. I forgot we moved it. It's behind the table. It's got books that are for children, young children, and, um, those, those were bought or borrowed or bought, you know, however I could get books. I, I got kids' books in there, children's crayons. Um, there's some, um, highlights in there for the kids to use, got new crayons for them. And, um, and it's accessible for almost any child under the age of five, or even at five, I mean, you know, it's, it's child-sized. Next to that is a shelf with plastic bins in it, and we put new toys in there. There's, um, Hot Wheel cars, there's Legos. There's, I don't know if you know what these stress things are, the little bubble things that the kids, uh, Poppets, that's the name, thank you. We've got a bunch of them in there, um. I'm only a grandma, so I don't deal with that. So, um, and we got more books in there and, um, crayons, so it's, it's very friendly for the kids, and so they come in. Um, the boards on the wall, there's a magnetic whiteboard and a magnetic chalkboard. The chalkboard's down lower. The kids love that chalk. I got sidebox chalkboard, so it's nice and bright and intense, so they really like that. The bookshelves on the wall, I put them up higher for the older children that come in, and it has age-appropriate reading material in there. Um, we have, um, chicken soup for the teenage soul, and a few other books. There's, um, pencils in there, colored pencils, and some of those adult coloring books that they, they have out now. So those two shelves are for the older children. Um, you can see the backpacks there. We have had backpacks donated to the department on different occasions, and we had some left over, and I just put them up there. We can give them to the children or whatever. If we run out of backpacks, we will. Am I in trouble?
No.
Oh. Oh, oh, I didn't realize it was up close. I'm sorry. Yeah, so that's the one for the, for. Oh, oh, I didn't realize it was up close. I'm sorry. Yeah, so that's the one for the for the teenagers. Um, that's another one for the teenagers. Over here, and there's the magnetic boards. On the wall, you see a green alligator. That's called an activity board, I think is what they call it. And it's down lower. The little kids can get into it, get play with it, and I understand they've been making good use of it. The white table there is um move a round table that the officers can use, so they can sit wherever they need to 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 write reports. I'm not sure what's on these. Um, okay, it's TV. There's a TV in there. Mayor North suggested a TV. She came over and gave me some input, because we get a lot of children in there, and they're sitting in there on this sofa sometimes, watching, you know, doing, just being entertained and while their parents are being interviewed in the other room, and sometimes they can hear that, and it stresses them out. So we got a TV. Um, Reggie did that. He their their business, um, Kingsburg Media donated the TV, which was really nice. He set it up so you can only watch Disney Plus on it, so we don't have to worry about them getting on the news or watching something inappropriate. Um, so that was a a nice addition. There's a rug on the floor there that's for the kids to play with their cars, fun little thing. There's the magnetic boards again, you can see. And of course, the alligator. That's the small love seat that we have in there. It's about the same size as all that they had in there for the adults to sit on before. And then we've table in there. It's got a charger for their cell phones and and things. And this is the larger sofa, so that we can get more of a family in there. On the wall, I'm not sure how this shows. We'll go back? Okay, um, so there's a mirror up there. I don't know if you can see that very well. I said, kids love to look at themselves in the mirror, especially teenagers. We need a mirror in there. My husband thought I was crazy, but I got a mirror in there. And uh, let's see, where's, oh, there's the backpacks again. There's a measuring stick. My husband says, why do you want that in there? Not to be picking on my husband, but he just doesn't understand. And I said, the kids love to measure themselves. I mean, you know, kids wanna see how tall they are. And uh, so we got that in there, and um, that's pretty much it. So we've, it's been used. Chief says he's walked by and seen the kids in there playing with the stuff. And um, I feel real happy about the way it turned out and very positive. Um, kids are gonna get a lot of pleasure out of it, as much pleasure as you can get sitting in a police department. Any questions? If you ever come down to the PD, ask to go in and see the room.
I just wanna say thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
That's a lot of work and effort and thought, and you, you said you're a grandma?
I am a grandma.
Okay, you know, that's perfect. You know, there's the different age varieties, right?
Yeah.
Color books up there in the mirror. It's just all the thought that you put into that. And I know she was, I know you were picking on your husband, but thank you too. Uh, help that you contributed, and it's, I I had brought up this question. I couldn't remember if we had gone through with this project or if it had happened. So I'm very thankful for this update because um it is really important for them to feel comfortable even in a very uncomfortable situation in this time. So, thank you so much.
Oh, you're very welcome.
I love the colors.
Oh, thank you. Well, I did that right then. Okay, no more questions?
Just note, thank you. I mean, it's a good project, everyone knows that, but I, you can tell that your heart went into it, which makes it a lot, a lot better than I think.
Thank you.
It could ever have been.
Yeah, thank you for your volunteering.
Thank you, Chief Taylor.
Yep.
For the manual labor that was forced upon you.
Thank you. I I wanna also recognize publicly Barbara Taylor and um Chief Taylor for their continued service to this community, which just seems endless and she is a gem, and she did a great, a great job there, and and the the kids love it. So thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just gotta put some snacks in there. There's snacks in there.
Right, okay. Six point four, city engineer, project progress report, report by city engineer Dave Peters, presentation by city engineer David Peters.
Good evening. Uh, wanted to kinda update you on some of the, some of the projects we're working on. Um, first, the our capital improvement projects are moving forward. Um, couple of projects that I know you guys are, have heard about before are actually getting ready to break ground. Um, the extension of the bike path on Madison Avenue, that's out to bid. Um, some of the vines have all been cleared. Uh, right away has been cleared, so we're uh, we're expecting to start uh construction on that in early May. It should be done by close uh, close to around Memorial Day. The uh, our roundabout at Bethel and Sierra is also uh out to bid. It will it will open about the middle of April, and so you'll you'll be seeing those projects come back to you for award. Um, and we expect to get started on construction on that in May with anticipating completing it before um, before the the end of the summer. We're also uh in the right away acquisition phase of the Eighteenth Avenue sidewalk, so all the design is done. This is the first, the first phase, so it's from um Tulare to Stroud, just on the uh west side. So all the design's been done. We've already contacted all those property owners once um to, you know, and and the impacts to a lot of the yards is just a couple of feet. Um, but some of those yards do have improvements that go all the way out to the curb, so there's some reconfiguration that needed to be done. So we talked through them once about how we would do that. Now we're going back to them to show them the final design and to um execute the right away acquisition. So that uh, we're hoping to get that uh completed in the next few months, go out to bed and get started on construction uh in the summer. The Madison Avenue Street um reconstruction project was just completed, so that was from Sierra to Stroud, and we do have another project in the works to do the next phase, which would be Stroud all the way up to Cam. So that's, you know, probably another year out before we can go to construction, but that is um, that is in the works. We're also getting ready to um finalize our design and put out to bid our streets project, which are the the streets you you approved in last year's budget, Seventh Street from Mainlet to Roosevelt, Ventura Street from Tenth to Eighteenth, and Nevada Street from Sixth to Tenth. So those streets will also be under reconstruction very soon. Some of the development projects, um, first one, you know, I'm sure you've heard a lot about Linaia Villas, um, that I wanted to highlight were actually, I believe, the latest I heard was tomorrow, the polls are coming out on Sierra Street. So the polls and the overhead line will finally come out. It's been done in three phases. PG&E had to do work first, then AT&T had to do work, and Comcast is the last one to come in. So if those polls come out tomorrow, um, that would, that would be, I'm gonna celebrate. And then we're gonna be able to complete the street and uh and the landscaping improvements and 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 have that uh, have that project completed by early April. If it doesn't happen tomorrow, we'll be on the phone making sure it does. So there's just, there's been a lot of delays, utility delays on that project. Um, and there's uh, the third phase of the Westar residential tract has has is underway as well. So that, there's um four approved phases already. So the first one was south of Cam at Eighteenth, and then the next one was directly north of Cam, and so now they're on phase three, which is north of that track. So they're continuing to move north with that housing um development. And then uh, on your agenda tonight, you approved track sixty one forty one, which is on north of uh, of Cam, west of Academy. So there'll be another construction, it's kinda northwest of the uh Community Partners um project that's that's finishing up. Uh, we're working with a developer to re um, redevelop the Sinclair Gas Station right over there at Golden State and Sierra Sierra Street. So um, they're planning to just kinda redo the whole thing. So I think we're getting close to be able to uh, to approve that site plan and and move forward with that project. Um, and we're also in the plan check phase on the Union Seventy Six Gas Station and Rafer Johnson Drive in Sierra. That was approved last year. So those projects are moving forward. Um, couple of other projects that we're working on, we're um, and uh, working on updating our improvement standards, so that should be before you. Um, targeting April to have a, a revised set of improvement improvement standards before council for uh, for review and approval. We're also um completing the, our water model update, so that's the hydro, uh, the uh, the electronic water model of our hydraulic water model of our water systems. It will tell us what what uh, what deficiencies we have and what we need to improve in our system. We've already done some work on this, but we're kicking off the hard design phase of remodeling the PD, the police station. So we have a kind of a kickoff meeting with the architect and the chief next week, so it's kind of an exciting project. Um, Golden State Boulevard reconstruction, you've heard about that. It's been going on for years. I don't even know how many, maybe ten. But I just wanted to update you, the latest um I'm hearing on in terms of the schedules, that it'll go to construction in summer of twenty twenty three. So we have to wait one more year. There's still um, they're still in negotiations with the railroad, trying to get permits to do all the crossings and finalizing some right away acquisition, so. Um, we're also working on a project to put uh rectangular rapid flashing beacons at four crosswalks on Sierra Street from uh Draper, right there at Memorial Park, all the way down to, we're hoping to have a new one installed at uh Madison and Sierra Street. So there's, there's three, there's three that are already existing crosswalks, and then we're, we're trying to add a new one. So we're developing the design on that project. Uh, we just submitted a um, a grant, so you remember, we did our our downtown Kingsburg strategic plan that was funded through a transit oriented development grant, so it had a lot of components. We just submitted a grant um for kind of the first phase of of some of those improvements, which are bike lanes and doing um uh pedestrian improvements at the intersections. And I was just notified earlier today that we've been asked to come and present at their, to their scoring committee, so I'm hoping that's a good thing. But um, so we'll be doing that next week. And that's all I have. That's the highlights of my report, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You have a question?
Yeah.
Sinclair?
Yeah.
What exactly are they wanting to do there? Can you say?
Yeah, I mean, they've submitted a site plan review. I I think we're close to approving it. Um, it's very close. Um, but yeah, it's it's a, it's a new, I think the whole site's gonna get, yeah, it's just the whole, the building's gonna get uh demolished and moved. The whole site's gonna get reconfigured. I think they are gonna try to save and use a lot of the underground tanks, because that's kind of a big deal to take those out and move them. But uh, but yeah, I think everything above ground will be will be new, or at least that's the proposal, so.
So you're saying they want that whole area where?
Yeah, it would expand and it would, it would encompass the area that was currently or formerly the pub and sub, so.
Yeah, they just tore it down recently, yeah.
Yeah, so it'd be that whole, that whole parcel would be, would be developed. So more, more uh, more fueling um stations, a bigger convenience store. I think they have some outside, I'm happy to show the site plan with you, but they have some outs- outdoor like dining area, you know, tables and those sorts of things. I think that canopy was part of the proposal, so.
Okay. Yeah, I have a question. Oh, go ahead. Would you go ahead, you're first? No, it's not related to that.
Um, I have a question about the Golden State Boulevard reconstruction. I've brought this up before, and I'm, I'm really stretching here to squeeze this question in, um, because it's, we're in front of Delicasa, I've mentioned where there's a bunch of dirt.
Yeah.
I would love to see parking right there instead. And I know where the railroad is, yes. And a part of this Golden State Boulevard reconstruction is that we have to have a lot of communication with the railroad. I know it's cog that's dealing with that, right? But is there any way that in these conversations, possibly, there can be some advocacy for that?
Yeah, we're working on that. So I've already done some research, figured out where all the right away's at, so I'm trying to figure out how we can do that, and yeah, we are working on that, so.
That's perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know if it would be part of that project or a separate city project. We're just trying to figure out the mechanics of how we would do that.
Sure.
And then we can figure out how we, how we get it funded or whether, what, what projects it's a part of, so.
See, no, if that could blend in, because it is a part of the other side.
Yeah, no, I understand, yeah.
Um.
Yeah, that, that, you, you mentioned that before, and that was not.
I've definitely mentioned it like three times, and I, I know, and I apologize, but.
No, it's okay.
I appreciate your.
Glad you brought it up again.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Yeah, my question had to do the same thing, the Golden City Reconstruction, um, when is that supposed to take place?
Twenty twenty three. So they're anticipating bidding the job in the the spring, and then they would start construction in the summer. The project has been split into three separate bid packages. Uh, I'm not sure if they're planning to bid all three and do all three at one time, or if they're going to, you know, stage, do phase one first and phase two, phase three, so Kingsburg is phase one, so.
Yeah, okay.
But yeah.
Okay.
But I think they're still working out the logistics of that.
The reason I ask is because there's a safety issue. I brought it up before, um, on Stroud, right there where Syncal CNC is and Ag Design.
Yeah.
Um, just yesterday, I was coming back, going back to work from lunch. You have two cars turning left immediately, going back towards town. You have people that are, then you have cars coming south.
Yeah.
They're turning in front of these cars, and they're supposed to go around, and then you have other cars going around.
Yeah.
Because there's, there's no lines on the road on, in the median there, and that's been going on for years.
That whole intersection's getting reconstructed. Stroud, Stroud, it actually comes in, comes in a gold state like this now, right? If this is Golden State, Stroud kinda comes in like this. So it's being bent, and it's gonna line up directly across from the CNC driveway, and it's gonna be signalized.
So my, my concern is, but right now, if that's not gonna happen till twenty twenty three.
Yeah.
You know, um, I've had the owners come to me and ask me, hey, can we get some uh, some, well, lines drawn, you know?
Yeah, re-striping.
Some striping, yes, thank you, some.
Daniel and I can go look at that, sure.
Because it's very dangerous there. I mean, it happens almost daily.
Yeah, we can, we can. If it's just simply a striping issue, we can, I think we can take care of that.
Okay. Yeah, I know that uh Josh and Nick would be happy to hear that.
Yeah.
Because they've been, they've been asking me about that, you know?
I'll get with our public works director and we'll.
Okay, thank you.
Look at that, huh?
Uh, any other questions for Dave?
Oh, sure.
Well, no, I'll ask later. It's not related to this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks, Dave. Okay, six point five. Solid waste rate study and Prop two ten update. Sponsored Public Works, presentation by Leckowitz and Singh Municipal Consultants. Let's see there.
It's hard.
I was thinking yours. Oh, yeah, but sorry about that. Um, so I have a running here in the city of Alvin. And um, and so allow me to do this presentation virtually, I'm half while recovering from COVID sadly. So tonight I have a fifteen minute presentation to give you a overview of the solid waste rate study. Um, there's some new regulations about um solid waste and particularly organic waste recycling um that will trigger some cost increase in the city, and um, I'm gonna give you an update on how that uh could potentially impact the the solid waste and rate, the rate paid by the members of your community. Next slide please. So we can just load, load the whole slide, yeah. So um, the city's solid waste rates have not increased uh for quite some time since two thousand nine. So if we think about inflation, if we think about all the other costs that have increased since then, the solid waste rate, so the trash rate has stayed exactly the same. And the city uses um an outside provider, Mid Valley disposal, uh to to um collecting both of um solid waste recycling and organic. And that contract began in twenty fourteen. And the city um pays an increase to Mid Valley every year um due to the contractual arrangements to increase by the um consumer price index. The solid waste is an enterprise fund, it's uh just like the water and sewer funds. So it uh, that means it's self supported by the rate, so it's not funded taxes or any other outside uh funding source. It really is supposed to be operated by an independent business, meaning revenues should equal expenses. It's um, and it's separated, separate from the general fund, as I mentioned, and it doesn't receive any tax revenue. Um, so the rate study will cover a five year period. That will be timeline allowed by Proposition eighteen. And then it's the proposition that's the over, I mean, typical requirement for how um water, sewer, solid waste rate can be adopted and implemented in California. Next slide please. So um, under Prop two eighteen, um, there is some uh procedural requirements as well as substantive requirements. And the substantive requirements uh state that the rates must be reasonable and must be based on the actual cost of providing the service. So the rates are not set to generate a proper. So the rates are not set to generate a profit for the city somehow. They're they're set at um Mid Valley disposal rates plus a bit of administration and overhead costs. And they're proportional based on how customers take service. So it is illegal to charge more group of customers too much to subsidize another group of customers. So everybody has to pay their fair share, actually. Um the procedural requirements are that the city should conduct a rate study um to identify the actual cost of doing um providing the service. The city is required to mail a notice to all affected rate payers, the property owners, letting them know that the city um has conducted a study and has intended to uh adjust the rate, and that a public hearing will be held. And the notice must be mailed to rate payers um at least forty-five days in advance or or longer. And um propositions rating is interesting uh for water, sewer, and solid waste rate, because the voting, there's a voting process, however, it's um a protest vote. So um homeowners and rate payers have opportunity to submit a a a vote saying that they protest the rate, that they not agree with the rate. And if more than fifty percent of the people who were mailed notices reply back that they protest the rate, the rates cannot be adopted. Um if folks do not mail protests in, uh then the the rate change could could be adopted. Next slide please. Uh so here is the rate schedule, the current rate schedule for residential monthly solid waste rate. Um the most typical uh type of service is is um uh one ninety-six gallon barrel uh for twenty-five dollars and ten cents plus the two dollars and fifty cents recycling charge. So the the total typical monthly bill is um twenty-seven dollars and sixty cents. And then in addition, there is a two dollar and ten cent uh street sweeping charge. Next slide please. So I I looked at uh Kingsburg's current bill and compared that with uh other local agencies. Um a number of your your close um neighboring agencies are also served by Mid Valley Disposal. Um the Exeter, Zainer, and Reed Lee. And so uh Kingsburg is is right in the middle, has a very typical bill compared to other local agencies. Um we did find that uh Jayden and Salma were, all of those are served by um a different, a different franchise holder. So this was uh that was as of um most public agencies adopt new rate changes at the start of fiscal year, July first. So if we finish up the process of this rate study, I'll go ahead and update that to that rate survey. And it's likely that a number of your other local neighbors will increase their rates as well to um uh meet some of these new um organics recycling requirements. So this chart, I know there's lots of numbers on this chart. It's the uh commercial monthly rate. The main point here is that customers are charged based on the type of service they receive. Um commercial customers have the wide variety of bin sizes and can pass as much as six uh pickups a week. And so we would, we would keep that same type of rate structure, that Mid Valley structure, um its services, and we'll keep that, but adjust the amount each customer is charged um to make sure we're covering the cost of service. Next slide please. Why are rate increases needed? Um it really is to meet the cost of service. Because the rates have not been updated in so long, you know, the utility really has to come behind um its costs. So adjustment there is to keep up with Mid Valley's disposal rates, and in particular, the annual um sewer price index adjustment. There is some city staffing, administration, and overhead that we need to um recover the cost of as well. Um we, in in doing the study, um we talked with city staff a bit about street sweeping and found that there were areas in the city um that are being served, but aren't, the city's not recovering costs for them. So it's um some median areas that, you know, the highway, or not highway, but um larger streets with medians, those are being swept. Um but the city isn't recovering costs for that. And then um the street sweeper sucks up refuse and then has to dispose of the refuse that is sweeping. And that also is an added cost that isn't currently recovered in the in rate structure. The utility, the solid waste utility has been operating at a deficit. I can show you the the magnitude of that in just a minute. So it's it's losing money every year. Uh and because it has lost money, there have been inter-fund transfers. So other city funds have contributed revenue to keep the the solid waste enterprise uploaded financially. And so um the solid waste enterprise, um one option we could consider is paying back that money to the other funds. So also wanna look at a bit of an operating reserve, just in case there's uh emergencies or unexpected expenses that come up. And then um as I alluded to, there's new legislation, Senate Bill Thirteen eighty-three, that I'll go into in greater detail in a moment. Next slide please. So this slide uh shows the actual operating results of the solid waste enterprise. Revenues, you can see, have been pretty constant for the past five years at about twenty-nine million. Um that's a bit of ups and downs, but very fairly fairly steady. Um but you can see, under that, uh total expenses have continued to climb each year. Um and that is resulted in net negative revenues. So the point is, if this was a business, the business would shut down. It's it's not covering costs. It's operating in the red every year, considering the over the past five years. Next slide please. Um and so this, again, to illustrate the same point, this is the solid waste fund ending balance. Um this is negative. Uh the top of the chart there is actually the number zero. And then um at the end of this fiscal year, we expect the fund to be negative at about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um I even debated, maybe that line should be red instead of blue. Um so if there was no rate adjustment, uh the cost would continue to increase and the balance would get more and more negative over time. Next slide please. Um so to wrap up, I'm gonna um give you an update on um Senate Bill Thirteen eighty-three. Uh it's new new uh regi- uh regulation related to recycling and organics disposal. Um so the city must provide organic collection services to residents and businesses, must give out outreach, um develop ordinances, and monitor compliance. So Mid Valley, just in the past two weeks or so, has given us the new information about um how the city will be provided these services and the costs associated with providing organic recycling. So in terms of timeline, um the regulations have taken effect at the start of the the new year. Um we have two years for compliance and educational outreach, and then uh enforcement will begin. So we wanna make sure that the rate structure is in place. Uh we don't want two years to go by and then the city Kingsburg gets in trouble and hasn't um put a rate structure that accomplishes, you know, this new service that didn't survive and not keeping a good financial standing when enforcement does begin. And the overall goal is to reduce um waste and edible food, um you know, going into landfill. Next slide please. So um as I mentioned, the the new uh organics recycling law, I went to the calendar year. And so the working um city staff and Mid Valley to get uh the new information about the types of services that will be provided and the costs associated with those, to have the best information to inform our rate study process. So uh tonight is an informational session to start the conversation, to give you some preliminary info. Uh we'll continue to plug in uh Mid Valley, Mid Valley's cost estimate into our financial model to give you some draft rates. And the plan is to come back in April to um finalize the rate analysis and give you um the rate study report. Uh May would be the final recommendation. And then in June, we recommend um conducting rate payer outreach. And again, uh the rates for the solid waste fund have not increased in so long that we really wanna make sure the public is aware of of the process. And at that point, um if the city is uh supportive of the plan, can print and mail the Proposition Two Eighteen public hearing notices. There is a forty-five day waiting period, and after that forty-five days, uh you can conduct the Prop Two Eighteen hearing. So based on our initial schedule here, that would be August. And the new rates could go into effect in September if there is no majority in protest. That's what I have for tonight. Um we are still working on crunching the numbers, uh so I don't have any solid, um solid, uh you know, potential rate increases just yet. Um but we are, we're getting close, and so I'll come back next month um to give you some draft recommendations.
Any questions?
No, I don't have any. We're gonna have to wait until we get
Yep.
all the costs and stuff before we really have much more discussion.
I I do appreciate the timeline. That's very helpful for us and the constituents. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
Information only.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So no, actually, just information, okay?
Tonight was just informational, and uh the finance committee will discuss the item too as well. So once we get those uh numbers finalized.
Can I ask a question?
Um sure, yeah.
Uh those survey envelopes, are they gonna be post-gepaid uh envelopes, or the citizens have to put their own stamp and then goes back?
The Prop Two Eighteen?
Yeah.
So the, we we have different options. Um we'll have different options to be able to return it, both post-gepaid, or you can walk in and drop it off. Uh you can actually even come to the meeting and protest it as well. So uh different options, everything will be outlined uh in the ballot that gets sent out. Um so you'll have different options to be able to submit your vote.
Thank you.
Thanks, Daniel. Okay, s- number seven, council reports and staff communications. Seven point one, community services commission.
Uh Community Services meets ne- next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday. Seven point two, public safety committee. Uh we met last Monday. Uh Chief Dadian was there to give us some information and update on um body cameras for the police department and cameras for the vehicles. And um we we had talked about giving them some funds for that project, but they're still in the early stages. So it's gonna be another year or so, so the committee ended up voting to give the give funds for more cameras for the city, to put up in the city, so. We felt that was a need that uh Chief said there was also a need for to keep the public safe and keep crime low and for more cameras. So we ended up voting for that, more cameras, so.
That was a good meeting, Vince. I listened in on that.
Oh, did you? Okay, yeah, it was a good meeting. Okay, um and that's it for I have for that one. Um Chamber of Commerce, seven point three.
Nothing to report.
Seven point four, economic development.
Uh Economic Development Committee met on Monday uh of this week. Uh we discussed uh the creation of a downtown mural program. Uh so we're working on uh create crafting some policy for that. Uh and then we talked a little bit about the uh electric vehicle infrastructure and potential locations for for that in the downtown. And um so we're working on cost estimates uh for the design and build out of that. So that was our discussion on Monday.
Yeah, thank you. Seven point five, uh Finance Committee.
Uh nothing to report.
Seven point six, Planning Commission.
Uh Planning Commission did not meet in March.
Seven point seven, South Kings Groundwater Agency Joint Powers.
We uh did not meet. A lack of business, so I'll be next.
Seven point nine, cog. Michelle's not here.
Uh you missed seven point eight, but I had nothing to report.
Oh, I'm sorry. Seven point eight, yeah, yeah, my bad.
See me next month. Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Seven point nine, cog.
No, I don't, I don't have a council of governments up update for you. Nothing to report.
Seven point ten, council member reports.
I have nothing.
Have nothing. Seven eleven, city managers' report.
Uh just a reminder, the spring cleanup uh starts tomorrow, so it's three days uh this week and then another three days uh next week, next weekend as well. So it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and this week, and Thursday, Friday, Saturday, next week. So that's the free service for uh city residents. They just have to bring their proof of residency, um they live in town. So that's at Mid Valley Disposal's yard.
Their yard?
Yeah.
What are the times for that, do you know?
I think there's seven AM to two thirty each day. But there is a flyer, and it'll be in the carrier tomorrow as well. Um and on the, it's on the uh front page of the city's website as well. Uh and then uh just following up on our uh our ARPA discussion, our our workshop that we had last week. So we are developing, or we did develop a um survey uh to get more community input. And so that will be, we'll be putting that out. It'll start going out tomorrow with the carrier, and then we'll put it on our social media platforms as well. That's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you. Uh eight, future agenda items. We have none. Does anybody have anything?
I do not.
Okay. Nine, the Kingsburg City Council adjourns out of the regular calendar into closed session. We have nine point one, conference with labor negotiators.